Notice hereby given that a resident meeting of the town. And we will be considering all the 75. The city's government, so 7551, 1.27, one or more members of the town council may attend. If one or the town council will be present at the venue location, the following hours will be discussed. Call the order at six o'clock. Thank you, Paula. We want to ask you for your oversight by debates tonight and look over all of our citizens of New York. We want to thank you, Paula, the land that you've given us. And we also want to ask that you look over all the people that are still. I know there's many people on our council, but there's people on our council that family members that are ill, needing your help right now. We want to celebrate your birth on Christmas. Thank you, Lord. Amen. Go, Paula.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Howard. Councilmember Collins. And Sir, about that since I found out about all people in town. Uh, Councilmember Laura. Councilmember Diggelbeil.
Yeah.
And Mayor Carter.
I think we must not have, you dropped the number, or one of the dollars.
Councilmember Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Tony.
Yeah.
Councilmember Laura.
Yes.
Councilmember Diggelbeil.
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes.
At this time, I am about three minutes per person to address the council. Any topic of construction upon the state considering the stand island. There are not a one by themselves taking. I'm looking for requests from the presented to the city secretary.
The light minute.
Corinne.
Bingo.
Corinne.
Next pronouncement forgiven. Go ahead and say it now. Would you like to try again, Mayor?
Corinne.
No. Tyler, please start it up. Good evening, welcome. My name is Karen F. But now, hello, in range. Karen F. I wanted to share with the council. Something that I'm going through. From page sixty-nine. Harold and Joy. With blinders of their own making. They decided, chose to see who and what they thought she was. Instead of what was true. A sign of love was being sung overhead, but they couldn't hear it. I'll go ahead and say that again, with blinders of their own making. They decided, chose to see who and what they thought she was instead of what was true. A sign of love was being sung overhead, but they couldn't hear it. This is a lovely petition to lead narratives through people more interested in resolve. And driving the blessing, identity, and purpose. Where wrestling. From instead of offending a criminal activity. To defer on the side of a civil right. So, for example, when I check out a video from my public library. Uh, and the record played in my. Mechanism. I'll go ahead and return it, but no one. Oh, maybe, oh, maybe you should not have been following the narrative of books, movies, TV programs, videos. The police department, we are not, this is the United States of America, US citizen, and a medical officer. They're sharing my part.
It's already three minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, new, uh, hey, new business, recognizing possible action following items. Number one, um. Desiree Renee.
Right.
I. I just want to say that she's at a soccer game, I believe, tonight.
That's correct.
Okay, and so she was unable to make. But next time, I'm sure you will show. So, thank you. Number two minutes, considering a possible action, the following minutes, number nine points. Heard by Howard, seconded by. I'm not through on that one, so I'm gonna give it to Miss Tolan.
Councilmember Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan. Councilmember Laura.
Yeah.
Councilmember Diggelbeil.
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes. I have a three financial report, reviewing one of your financial reports.
So, um, you have any financial report, the faith reconciliation from October, we just got November, so. The most updated one that we have, so you can see this is in our general fund, uh, the balance report is point six one nine. The next page starts the segment of revenues and expenditures. Um, you see that the property tax went significantly up from last night, so we're about where we're supposed to be, about seventy-eight, seventy-nine percent. And then, um. Then those are the next three pages, so if you have any questions on, on the event, this is very familiar to her. Everybody wanted to be on the last eight form, so it's a different format. Nails.
Yeah.
So that's a training, it comes, the police department gets money. For training, county get money for training on, they, so if he wants to then, police officers do certain trainings, you can pay for it out of that fund. I, I don't remember why we get many, it's from his things. It said nothing other than, man, how. By either decorating, what has, is very free and. Nor did we have to cover the overtime. So, yeah, and, and that was all the works of our, our public work guys, Norma and Karen did the people, and they did an amazing job, and. But Rudy and Linda did the, I think they were the ones that did the tree, right?
And, uh, okay.
Well, no, it's super nice.
No.
Yeah. No, but the guys are really good.
Yeah.
No, we didn't buy any orders, but we had, and, um, so, nothing. For the Walmart.
Okay, but.
I have another question, um. CDC mixed up.
No. Go ahead, ask a question.
Um, I. I questioned myself that I knew that, that the CDC would, would some, you know, from that. And then I questioned myself, did I ever see to me, but I meant that. Explains to us what this means to me, yes, or what we, you, I know it exists in the, anyway.
So, this one, the way Seth and I are trying to find that document, he, he's convinced that the CDC doesn't get mixed beverage, but we're not sure. It's one of those that's on the surface later, and it's what's kind of been done, but I don't know if that's been done on. Somewhere along the way, when I started, it just became like, I, I don't really know, I don't think they're supposed to get mixed beverage, I think. Sale tax, so that we're trying to clean up. Yeah, I don't, well, it's been on there for a while, I mean, you could go with that, but that's why you're not, it's not, yet, so, um, but when we just was doing. About it, and I, I told him, no, they only get the bail tax, and well, you know, and then he pointed to this, and I said, well.
It is, it is vice.
All right.
Yeah, and so. Because, because you pay a separate line item for, for mixed beverage, and it's also, the, you have a sale tax you pay for mixed beverages. Okay, and so, this is the mixed beverage sales tax, not the, the gross.
So, they get just a percentage.
Yes.
Of that, and that's all the same.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it, it, should or not get it, all I'm saying is it's a sale.
It's, well, and that, that was kind of what the argument, that, because the estimate comes in, so, I, you know, when you, you know, when you fill that further on the deposit, you know, it's where it comes from, and so. That's why I started, I just don't know that it was, I think we've always gotten it, but I don't think it's humorous as mixed beverage.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? So, I don't know, and. It was difficult together, and so I think that's where it come from, but it's gonna take a little bit more research, so I will be happy to report back on that. But I couldn't quickly locate a document that said, hey, this is what, if I give our, I have, I can suck into it about it, so.
It'll, it'll be the. And we're like, Canada, please, the election, the, the. I, the, which I believe is done in two thousand, but that's the day of the fire.
Okay.
So, so it'll have been, the town will conduct an election, but, um, to authorize a bit more, or, you know, different, or, sales tax. It would, would probably. It might not be broken up into that level of the regiment, but then, we need that all in the pack, and so we recognize, we recognize. Package, and. It's a very important part. They're big, pretty much, we, it's small. And, 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 and our sales tax is not that. But then you have, you have a lower rate, so.
Sir, I'll, I'll update.
I have one thing to say.
Okay.
Will be, uh, the balance sheet for the, uh, general fund. You know that. Yeah, what we have on. Absolutely. You don't bother. Straight one.
I know. I found.
The balance sheet. Yes.
Okay, well, that's where it fails.
Okay. Right, I got it.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Miss Diggelbeil.
I think three gentle one down, um. Two items, two hundred and ten dollars and forty cents, both of them. They take care of their business.
Uh, okay, the, the community loan is, it means benefit that the town offers the employees, so that moving loan banking, which she out. Alone, in the amount of, I think, thirteen hundred dollars, and you may pay back every paycheck, it's a knowledge of the loan. And, um, so if the library, we did that, they found their paycheck on the payroll, and then you need to feed it from zero over to the, to the bank. So, the payroll, I don't, so they, if they're enrolled, be, um, the deficit people for that enough, and so, you know.
Okay, I don't know, for, for twenty twenty-two, oh, eight, consideration of possible action on first meeting of all establishments building code. Randy.
So, before you invite that, I didn't hear that, but today, and, um, it's basically, this is an ordinance updating our. It's actually the original, all of them. That. Are we adopting for this, this, that, which. So basically, we're adopting all of the current regulations that we already, what we feel by, when. But we can just put it in the cleaner, so that our records are. And reflect that we are going by the current building codes, and this ordinance will also allows for never reaching, or like. Times coordinate, so if twenty twenty-one is supplemented with, our ordinance said, we're going. Current, so I'm out there, our, way our ordinance speaks right now, is we just adopted the plan at the time, and it didn't allow. New, even though we do, it'll just, it'll be, it's better to have the current on.
It's kind of weird, Dave, that's why appearing, that COVID, that follows. Because I don't want to be sure, I have. Current, and I can be done, that they incorporate all of these sections to know that we should currently. Part out of the international residential code, that section people, three thirteen, that we say, that's the, that's the requirement that this residential code that requires private owners to have. The, the town didn't want that back in, um, twenty seventeen, and I didn't think that there's too much call for, for that by, by the council. Uh, today, and of course. We had additional requirement under the NFBA, the electrical code for the installation, we need to connect outside of. Uh, those are the two departure that the town was already. Adopted from the. Diggelbeil.
So, if there's anything in, in all these codes. Like all the cocaine, the one.
Good, yeah, I'm glad you brought that, uh, the, there is a specific section in this, in this document, it's in section two. Uh, so I said, so the normal language that you normally see ends up in, would be that, you know, the, the, the land would appear, uh, superseding, they can, if they're contrary. I included an exception to that normal doctrine by saying that, the matters that are, that are contrary, except for those who were in twenty years.
Yeah.
Look at the, the pain, uh, look at the, the. So, if this prevails over anything contrary, except, uh, excepting. Organics twenty, twenty-two, no seven, anything contrary, and that ordinance, which has been basically just the absence of a regulation. Uh, related to the code.
Excellent. So, I was thinking about that, it's really not sitting well in my stomach. I have a hearing hard time, because thinking about the scenario. That one of the, of the change will explode, because it wasn't expected. Or the, at all, or the right way. Will the town be liable?
Right, uh, I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't be liable of, under normal circumstances, for anything that's happening. That, that doesn't involve city real estate or city personal, so we're talking about banks that exist, you know, that are owned by people that exist on their property, the property that they're, they're renting, there's no connection. But, uh, with, between the town and those, the only, the only next one which we say is that, at one time, we would have inspected and approved those, in that way. So, the act of inspecting and approving, or the, the absence of any action to inspect or approve, does not implicate the town in terms of, uh. Poor community, or, livelihood, or that, you know, a, a governmental entity can't be, can't be liable, or, or failing to impose a regulation that somebody might. Furthermore, the, the, if we were to, like, talk about what we passed out, if we were to endeavor to raise that, that, that activity, we'd be running a foul statute that says we can't. For that, we could tell, that, that, the balance liabilities is all in favor of not making. Nothing on the side of, of trying to regulate it, other than a desire to be a good steward of that activity, but the. Our legislature thinks I'm a witness, because that's, that's, I recognize that.
Thank you.
You got the answer? You guys can see the book. Like, the book. But certainly, again, it's great, yeah, so. The, Jimmy knew it is like on more, you know, with the college year. And, and so, wouldn't be, and I'm guessing that's great, so I'm guessing there wouldn't be a significant difference between what was adopted back in two thousand twelve, when the legislature court written, I just, the, the more codes. If, uh, orange, when it's in the theme, we adopted our, our, some of the numbers made a difference. A little bit here, a little bit there, but that, in terms of the period, it's, I, I hate to find much. You didn't, there was nobody, anybody. Somebody who loaded that.
I know, I mean.
You want, right, Councilmember Tolan, said it's by Councilmember Diggelbeil, ordinance twenty twenty-two, considering possible action on vertebrae, ordinance seven two, killing those.
Councilmember Howard.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tony.
Yes.
Councilmember Laura.
Yes.
Councilmember Diggelbeil. Mayor Carter.
Yes. I'm gonna move to, uh, table number five. Welcome by Mayor Carter, seconded by Councilmember Waron, table of the, the board of.
Councilmember Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Tony. Councilmember Laura. Councilmember Diggelbeil. Mayor Carter.
I have a number six, where there's a twenty twenty, in, considering possible action during, only twenty-two nineteen, regarding selection. Of the administration project delivery service provider. To complete the application and project implementation of the twenty twenty-four community block. Program funding administration, Department of Agriculture.
So, we went out, our RFP, that, right, it was back in November, our deadline was to submit their, uh, RFP, uh, the end of November, November thirtieth, and so the, the. Uh, there was only a single submission with the grant works for the administration of this grant, so I'm recommending that we have grant works as the. Uh, so it's, you, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, so you can, that grant.
You ready? Vote for your grant work. You're moved, or, I will second. We have a motion on forward by Councilmember Waron, seconded by Mayor Carter, for the resolution twenty twenty-two nineteen, I'm not gonna be direct.
Okay, Councilmember Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Tony.
Yes.
Councilmember Laura.
Yes.
And Diggelbeil. Mayor Carter.
Yes.
Item number seven, resolution twenty twenty-two, that, considering possible action during the resolution twenty twenty, regarding the selection of the engineering service providers. And completing engineering services for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four community development program funding, administered by the sixth department. And.
So, we had, uh, three submissions for engineering funds for this, uh, grant, Hampton Engineering Movement and Associate. Uh, Artisman and Monies and Associate, and then Chime and Consultants, and, um, there, you know, the, uh. The package were, were super close, um, the. That's coming in second, while. Hampton and, and, uh, first, the, five years, in Boston, right, yeah, climate, in Boston. Uh, so, never done this project, at least, I know I was adding in the three, um, in there, so I think that would go with the highest rate, this was.
Who's for a girl?
So, it was myself, uh. The, the sports will all come close. And I. Credit working time in the management company. And, um.
And what do you want? No, I had some issues, but.
And this is present score.
This is the CDPG grant for the twenty twenty-three and twenty-six sports, this is the one. Which I didn't even have to power. Okay, so, uh, we'll talk about here, so I gave him the, um, quarterly, uh, CDPG, so lower grade grant value. That one, and, um, I had had a conversation with them prior to that, at that, and, and we planned the actions. The gentleman's agreement is, well, you know, however, it's, but we refer that openly, is that, um, there was too much money being left, uh, table at a state level. But then the state was having problems, going, hey, can you get my money, plan, because that's, and it's, that's, that's, that's normal for grants, right? If you don't use it all, then, you know, that's it, so, um, they had a couple of problems, right? So, they need to have a pre-giving gentleman agreement, and then if projects couldn't be done, and it's, if you're in the fiber of that amount, so that would get left on the table. Or, uh, our case in our, well, area, it doesn't matter, too, but I guess there's a couple that don't agree with the gentleman's agreement, so if you have one that doesn't agree with it, then it throws everything off anyway. And, um, and they did raise it from two hundred fifty thousand to five hundred thousand, so at this point, you know, it's, it's nightly, every man for themselves, and that's how the second, uh, term, and I want it, because. Um, this way, and everyone, and when everyone locks themselves in, and they want to destroy, with more money, it's different, they couldn't, present, so at the state level, they kind of put the kibosh on the gentleman agreement. All of it, so it's not this, with our areas, not similar to our values, everywhere, so, um. So that won't, that's not going to happen, so we are going to apply for the, something five hundred thousand, and. We want.
The block grant, we get three hundred, that's, whether it's.
It's typically for your free maintenance, you can, if, we usually, it's a very different principle, but this is for.
But, um. Thank you, Paulus, do you, do you have a feeling on how, my, or, 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 or. In the ministry, in France.
They're only, they're only, it's my impression, and appropriate passion. So, yeah, and so, you know, unfortunately, of course, you know, the, the tablets they provide, right, there's, you know, everyone, you know, that's one of the things I have a lot of, of that. Or, if it doesn't, doesn't talk about the integration of how they did that, you know, according to the engineer, you know, they've worked successfully on, you know, all the projects that they've listed, right? So, it's really hard just to, but, uh, my communication with Grant Works is that they are familiar with all three of them. So it's really hard to support, but uh my communication with Grant Works is that they are familiar with all three of the engineering companies that. Since they were the only submission, I did, you know, um talk to them a little bit and they 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 didn't give me any indication that there was a problem with any of them. They felt that they recognized. You know, I mean, it wasn't, they didn't weigh in, they can't technically weigh in, but I I didn't get any bad vibes. I thought, you know, that that they've worked with all of them before and that that would wouldn't be a problem.
I would like to see that whoever before decides on hiring, that it's a threat to them to work correctly. With. Because now that it's every man for himself versus what it was before, let's go out and get it.
But um they they listed, you know, you can list all of your experience, um you know, and I believe they have more of the. They they listed more of the CBP title, the grass that they worked in and projects that they.
And uh we have done work with this. And uh we. Design. We push engineers. And we have a problem. What comes to y'all?
Thanks. Let's take a break.
One more question. When you guys get this for work. I know. The way it is, I agree with the way it's done, and I can't really tell you another way, although we go with that.
Okay.
Did anybody call for a answer?
No.
So we don't really know. I think it's a good indication that's. Well, not gouging.
It was it was within, I mean, so it went forward two fifty-eight, two fifty-five and and two forty-seven. Um and you have, so the one big one was just the. The type of project, so movement and associate, they had, they listed nineteen projects that they had, um you know, versus. The other ones uh have said by the. They listed lots of products, which is, you know, so that was. But I mean, you know, they they compile other engineers and they say, oh, yeah, forty-nine years of experience, they have five engineers that all have seven. Or seven engineers that all have seven years of experience, so therefore they have. You know.
Probably would do well with any of the farms, but overall.
Yeah, I mean.
All the confusion by your experience that I've had to do this before and it's not. And um I appreciate them taking their time to do this.
And I really call, you know, myself, you know, I kind of wanted to learn with them that, you know, I mean, I really, really take the first one that I I scored myself. Um it it's really hard because I mean, they're all just, they're all just putting their best foot forward, so unless you're gonna really go check. You know, and one of the questions on the score sheet is, is they perform in a timely manner. Well, nowhere in there, I think they give like. Or in and of itself, so you know, but we did that, you know.
Mayor. Uh the grand plan. We go. And also weren't mentioned.
So I move that. Twenty twenty-two. Regarding the selection of the engineering service provider. To play the engineering services for the twenty. Regarding selection.
We have a motion on table by.
Councilmember Howard. Councilmember Tolan.
Yes.
Councilmember Waral.
Yes. Yes. On the eighth executive second. Okay, very good. I'm number nine. Go away to Denver, getting into reports. And before we do this, I would like to say that I. Mend you all on the uh. The 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 Christmas program, it was fantastic, and it's a. To me was an example of how city government should work as far as the decentralized, letting the employees. Use their imagination and their expertise and do what they need to do, because it was the best one. And and I just. Use that. Of the grill and in in the future, I know, future administrations is, you know, grab on that.
I was definitely to work with my team, uh the slide was uh it was a big, big date with a lot of positive reviews on that thing is. Um I I wanna get you to the crystal, not even that a dollar stack costs, but um. Yeah, no, we don't spend a lot of money on the Christmas, and I told her, I'm like, we are not spending a thousand dollars, it's like, I will, we are not, you know. And um she came in and the the slide was. I I think. Two hundred dollars, and I said, you get the donation, if you came up with like one, a hundred quarter donation, so I mean, the event almost paid for itself and. And um, you know.
We had the high point.
So I I put the girls again, like I did, the girls are crazy outside and public works, they they worked a lot of long hours.
Thank God, I first know.
No, yes, I don't know how I'm gonna talk that. I say. Um so speaking of which, I'll just uh take that to chance, and I have reached out to uh staff project. Do I think I can give an email? We're going to hopefully meet the with all the powers that be who have had a list of. And we're gonna try to uh create the twenty twenty-three calendars for all the cities of events, so we can have less crossover. Um I don't know how well it'll go, you know, uh we'll see what everyone. There's gotta be give and take, right? So but hopefully we can, it seemed like it was gonna be a well received, so we'll we'll try to have less crossover. So.
Represent, I I had talked to. Port of the end of the end of the island and, you know, wanna work together.
Yeah.
Okay, make it more fluid, so there's the meeting, we all get to enjoy each other's events.
Right.
And so everyone's on board with that in my conversation.
Well, that that's that's what I'm vocal for, and a couple of people that I reached out to and set up a meeting and um. No, I I heard one of the staff over there, they were sorry that they missed it once they heard about it, they were like, well, they were. So so hopefully we can. Um so. The grants, real quick, there's no change in our fund, nothing's happened since the last time I updated uh in January, it will be the second second month of money, but. For report on that. Um the street improvement grant, uh we're having the public hearing for the closeout of that project and on the on the twenty. And then um there'll be the final uh yeah, and things like that, so that'll be closed. The core construction half three thousand and one discuss the concept variables of uh delays that they had, they had a lot of trouble with. Engineer and. And um so I I assume they're going to, at the end of the meeting, it's gonna be, they're gonna want some more money because of what it cost them and the delays and such, you know. Uh I asked them to look at it before January, or maybe I need to spring, but they can't so um. I I just know that that's what it's about. So um they had this kind of problem in the middle of the project. I told them to let just finish the project out and the fact that. Everything else on the on the inside, um on the flip side, so um that, I'll keep you guys posted on that, so they reached out and. Uh that's a rat on that. Uh weren't some of their delays? Well, yes and no. So the first part, the big delay was because the retirement act called to change over their old recording system. And so like they gave us their invoices and between getting it grabbed off the bone, the proof's me. We didn't get it submitted before the old system closed, and so it had to wait like uh, I wanna say a month before they got. The new system up and then we had to get it through the, I mean, it wasn't anything that. But that was like those biggest check, that was you know, all of their people, all of their, and so they were very, right, and I can understand, you know, they, you know. It was a big test, so um but they're good. Save that, but then there was some corrections towards the end that. The engineer wasn't okay with that, you know, they felt that was fine, and so kind of went back and forth and just the process. Having to go back there, having to wait, so we'll see what they kind of proposed, uh you know, that that they they had to fix, I think, three times, they had to go back. Repay. Right, because they had, they just like stripped down the middle, yeah. It doesn't have, right, it could install one piece, yeah, because the second end may been attached down the hill. And uh Cruz, uh for Cruz's point, we're not made for a patch, paper tree, and so he wanted it to, you know, so. That's that one. We're still waiting on the. Awarded that we did call and access for official documents, which is the good sign. Um, oh, and the other thing I didn't say, so like when I met with the the, we did the meeting for the small city coalition. I did offer to host the uh summer meeting out here at the equatorism center. So the eighteen will be held out here, a lot of them haven't been out here since the. They're they're still doing a lot of.
They, I mean, the equator center is constantly, I mean, it has professional development constantly happening there for the teachers. And they just hold the the Christmas program.
Yeah. There's no uh. This town engineer has been running, I've not gotten, we got one actually movement and you know. Our Q and uh. But none of them are really worth it, they had seven responses. Only one was from Texas, but he was more of a uh a teletech engineer, not really good. And one was out of uh. And the rest of them are all out of state, so we haven't really gotten it. Um and I'll reach out. Well. Maybe that January, January tenth, it's so, unless every was every now, wouldn't have it, I don't know how we respond. Um same with the PPA, they've gotten. And okay, um director of public works and I'm still. Still, but we have three applications that I'm considering and but so and Ramon will express interest of being. The public service supervisor and so uh Ramon. Tony comes back, we're gonna kind of hash that out and. Hot properties, they're fifteen, but uh property registry in November, so now we have a total of seven gates. Recently, this and all four people are two letters out, so I find them. We will see in the January. Front picture of David's place. We, we did, we can, it's having to go through a really certain. Some of them won't even say the address, they'll just get any, you know, um so, so uh. Any questions?
Not even.
But we're getting there and we get submissions through the online website, they are just fully the format online and sending it to us, so that first for you, so you've got what we're for through online. Um the first last year plan, the survey is well underway, um when I sent it out to you guys on Friday. I'm posting, um I have a daily post scheduled on Facebook, so every day. So we're gonna leave that going through end of December. We had a QR codes that people are being able to and um like if they're. So I mean, um we've not gotten any requests for it, our copy. So this will all look like that, but otherwise. It's going up every eight, so for me, I I also come to the response, we got to the last. But we're at a hundred and seven as of. Um we'll do a public hearing for a whole on Jan- in January, it gets. Your presentation is the public, they'll check the box that we do a public hearing, you know, for any comment and a public comment on the parts plan. Um so that'll happen in any rate. We'll be able to present others in the presentation, we might have more people that are gonna be the the public comment, but.
And. The what would the chairman for the?
The survey, we're gonna get the survey open till the, I mean, I'm not. Oh, for for the, you have the the deadline for the uh price master plan at the week first and then. The grants, I think, was August first, so we're trying to get everything done for her, like February, like so we can set something in our. February one. And, you know. So she talks with in January, she can bring that, and they hopefully have a. And I think it just has to be. I I thought the last one I thought was.
Well, we can. It exists with the way we thought, or I've seen them done by ordinance.
Okay. And then after that, it's just all like, you may have the course, all the department stats of, you know, the library, we're still, we're still advocating. And then after that, it's just all like you may have the support. So all the department stats of, you know, the, the library were still, we're still averaging twelve, thirteen. Um, secrets of the library. So that's about, um, holding. Their Wednesday night events seem to be real popular. About eight to ten regular, um, on, on the Wednesday night events. Um, so those are. Media. Advertising, that marketing, what am I trying to say? So we're trying to do some of that. Uh, I did move over to the, what was called constant contact, which is helping me do the email blast and the, um, Facebook page a little more smoothly. And, yeah, it's really good. And, um, when I get really good. Text message, so like if you can, it's when we have a marketing page and we have that, they will. So that we can have the ad, the advertisement, so people can opt in. So that, um, I just haven't started that. So. We didn't know that. Um. Maybe when I get to the register, just the, uh, the department reports. Let me know if they're, you know, they just want to. I think that's what everybody, but. They're horrible, but there's not much we can do about it. It's a lot of, we sprayed everything. But last Monday, a lot of things, um, is, uh, employee to help up. All sorts to help spray. Um, I have her license. Our area covered, but the, the rules apply to it. It's like it would matter if the worst, um, hours. So they have. Spray because of the, the. So. It's a new handspray, they'll hopefully this whole front, so.
Under the pole.
Yeah, pray for the pole. I know it's the only time you'll hear me be excited for it to be cold. So, uh, hopefully with that, it'll be, but, but that's why if, if there's a lot, you know. It's for everyone. I know people call and ask you guys to, when we're, we're not spraying, it's typically because of the, of the. And she sprays real early, dusk or dawn. So like, oh, I've not seen you. Well, unless you're at a three in the morning or eight at night, you're not. First break. She's great early on Wednesday for the visual purposes for people. I mean, I just told her, I'm like, just go, just go. And she, I think she started at like four or five, you know, and started spraying. Um, just so people could see it out there, you know, but them usually it's a desk till dawn. Cause that's when they're the most out. So it's the most. Well, you know, the way. I'm on the street and then when I, I'm on the street, they would know it's my life. So. Put that though. No. We did say, I think, to file. So, um. Bye bye. Thanks. Party is Friday and so on a part. But right there. Inside of my. Yeah. Um, so it's on Friday at six o'clock. So if you'd like, like, join us, they kind of do, and I never. Stop by and join us. You're more than welcome. It's not, um.
Like, uh, small prizes or.
We go in the past. Yeah. So we did, if you guys wanted to do gifts or want to do something, you can collect it, uh, we can go to our sponsors now for any, you know, donations that you've got. Um, we've got two big TVs out there so far. Um, lots of gift cards. Drop off like kind of a little miscellaneous gift that we're. So, you know, I mean, anything you guys want to do. No, we just draw numbers. So like we'll go through and assign number people that's right. Yeah. Well, wait, that's what we did last year. I mean, I like one else.
Yeah.
Yeah. I feel like quickly guys TV and then. Or a towel. Yeah. I'll just kind of do it now. But yeah, if there's. You want. And there's a plenty of.
I've been. That's remember hours. You were there.
Councilmember Howard. Councilmember Tullman.
Yes.
And then councilmember Wild.
Yes.
So while I.